...that we need to do. Some people call this the 21st century skills. If you Google that, you'll get a whole bunch of different ideas. But in general, you're talking about communication, collaboration, creativity, flexibility, initiative, all of those pieces on top of informational literacy, media literacy, technology literacy, numeracy, all of those things. So when we're talking about academics and we're talking about students being prepared for the future, I want you to think not only about what can be measured on a standardized test, but all of these things as well. So now, if you would like, you can use your QR code and put that in place and then put in your own input of what you want our students to know in the future. And it'll ask you for a word, a phrase, and you can enter as many as you want. And then at the end of my presentation, I'll show you the Wordle that we came up with together by creating our list of skills. And administrators, you can play along too if you'd like. I'll get out of the way. Is it working for people from back there? Good. Mind your way. All right, take just a couple of minutes to put in the skills that you think our students need in the future. And you can continue to put those in while I'm talking. So now I want you to sit back and think about how does our district provide all those skills for all those students that we need to do? And you'll have some people that really come from that bluish-purple circle of the science of teaching. The research says, here are the best practices in instruction. Here's what we need to do. And you're right. And then I'll have other people that are like, it's all about trusting supportive relationships and being included and feeling like you have, you know, good supportive people at school. And you're right. And finding that right balance is difficult. Put your hands up if you have more than two children, more than one child at home. Yep, me too. All right, now, put your hands back up if those two children need the exact same thing out of a teacher, out of structure, out of activities. Anybody got two clones that are exactly this? No. And then we have 17,000 of them coming into the district. And how do we find that right balance, which is different for almost every child? Student voice. By listening to students and reacting not to just their aggregate, but to their individuals, we are so better prepared to find the right match between the science of teaching and that safe-inclusive environment. We do all of that in the middle of the Climate for Learning framework. We find the perfect intersection of all of those with our Climate for Learning framework. This drives almost all of our academic improvements. So I'm going to go through pretty quickly and talk about those, but I know anybody at the tables that you would talk with after this can give you more details about it as well. So we start off with SEL instruction, explicit SEL instruction. And that is these five core social-emotional competencies. Our schools have been teaching this for decades, but it kind of has a new piece of that that has gotten a lot of attention. But we're talking about these five things. Self-awareness. Do you know enough about yourself and how you learn? Self-management. Can you work toward completion of a goal and manage yourself? Do you have social awareness of other people? Relationships skills and responsible decision-making. The second thing is common expectations for behavior. We have 17,000 kids coming in. We've got to have common rules for engagement. We have to have common rules of how we're going to treat one another, and we have to teach that. And that's the second component, and then we have to continually reinforce it. The third piece is integrating those social-emotional skills into academic content. If you're struggling with a real big math problem, you've got to have some self-awareness. You have to have some perseverance. You have to have responsibility. When you're engaging in a big discourse in social studies, you need to be able to be socially aware and be respectful of others. The next piece I talked about is youth voice and engagement. So critical that we talk to our students. We ask them what that is like, how are we interacting with them? And then give them opportunities to lead. If you think about what's going to make them different from computers and make them marketable, they have to lead. They have to have practice making decisions, making choices, knowing how to continually learn, because that amount of information is doubling every 12 hours. The last, the next piece is supportive school and classroom climates. You have to have in this piece that research base, what are the best practices in literacy instruction? What are the best practices in numeracy instruction? How do we get past all of this? And then how do we keep our students engaged in the process from early childhood through 12th grade, from special education to general education to English learners? What is the best way to do this? The next component is staff SEL. Staff needs to have self-awareness, social awareness, have a sense of belonging in order to be the best that they can be for students. And then with supportive discipline, we have to have, yes, the consequences, but also how do we bring those students back in and teach them conflict resolution and teach them how are we going to move forward to have all those skills that they need in order to continue to succeed? So our Climate for Learning, I've just gone through all of those pieces. Now I'm going to talk just about the blue circle with that research-based practices. Student engagement is something we are working on so hard here in SD 308 with collaborative structures, with individual accountability, and getting students moving, talking, engaging, owning their instruction. And then higher-level thinking is a huge part of this, an inquiry-based, where they're asking the questions and then seeking out the answers to their own questions. A lot of that goes in with classroom management. We're working hard to get better at utilizing data in SD 308, not only for the aggregate of how are we doing for everyone, but how are we doing in different demographic groups? And then we're working on learning targets, just like at the beginning of this presentation, I told you this is what I want you to get out of it. It's really important, especially with our older students, that we do that for them as well. And then we're working to have early interventions for reading and for math to make sure before kids are too far behind, we catch them up where they need to be, especially coming back from COVID. This is our math framework. I'm not going to go through this. You can relax. But if you're really interested in it, you can come over to this table in a few minutes and we can talk more about that. This is our literacy framework, where we can, same thing, we can talk more about that, but the big piece is gradual release of responsibility, where students are owning some of their learning and their outcomes. Then the other part of that circle is the safe-inclusive learning environment. Many of us at the tables will talk about this as well, but this is about having a school-wide behavioral expectations, having an inclusive learning environment, recruitment of diverse staff, so that our students see themselves in our staff and our teachers and administrators. And then this part is the amplifying student voice. If you went to amplify, you already saw some of the student coalition and the student ambassadors at some of our board meetings. We want to use student data to drive practice. We want students questioning and ownership of their instruction in math. A part of our literacy framework is that students are choosing texts during some part of the reading instruction, so it's matching not only their reading level, but their interests as well. How have we supported these improvements? We've hired 15 academic interventionists, actually a couple more if I think about it, more instructional coaches, more counselors and social workers, connected professional development on all of these pieces, so that our staff see how all this goes together. Then we do have a five-year strategic plan called InVision 308 that you can look for on the website. I'm almost done, Jen, but you're sweet. And then how do we monitor improvements? Our district team here, as well as our other administrators, we visit almost 2,000 classrooms a year to see are the plans that we have talked about tonight putting into place? And then we have school and district plans that are all aligned with the things that I talked about. We spend a lot of time reviewing student achievement data to know whether our impacts and the resources that we're using are having the right effect. And then we do look at student, community, staff, parents' surveys on how we're doing. So how can you learn more? Go to our website and look at InVision 308. You can go to the website and see our math and literacy frameworks, or you can come over here to this table. You can review the Illinois Report Card, or perhaps most importantly, you can have a conversation with some of us tonight. All right, if you will go ahead and show the Wordle, we'll look at how, what our skills were that we collectively put together. Okay, it's not updating. Okay, so we got collaboration, problem-solving is big, critical thinking, compassion, empathy, adaptability, persistence, social intelligence, curiosity, courtesy, critical consciousness. Okay. We're going to leave that up, and people can put some things behind that if they want. They can add more to that. But as you have these conversations, I encourage you to think about all of these, plus the traditional reading, writing, math, science, and social studies content. Dr. Sprolem?
All right, thank you so much, Mrs. Dalquist. That was a lot of great information in a very short period of time. So we're going to go ahead and start. We're going to have, like I said at the beginning, we'll have three 15-minute sessions. And once the first session is done, after the first 15 minutes is up, we'll let you know. And then you can go to any of the six tables that are labeled to have conversations of your choosing. So Ursula, if you want to go ahead and put that up there, and I'll be walking around to join some of those conversations, but the 15 minutes for the first session starts now. Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our first session. So we're going to go ahead and restart the timer in just a moment. So if you want to go ahead and finish the conversations that you're having at the table, we'll give it another minute and then we'll go ahead and shift to session number two. Okay, we're going to go ahead and rotate. If you're still in a conversation at your table though, you can stay at that table and continue the conversation. But there is two more rotation, fifteen minute rotations in this evening's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to end our second session and make our way to the third and last 15 minute session for this evening. So if you'd go ahead and finish up the conversations that you're having at your table and go ahead and go to one other table that you haven't been to yet. Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to end our second session and make our way to the third and last 15 minute session for this evening. So if you'd go ahead and finish up the conversations that you're having at your table and go ahead and go to one other table that you haven't been to yet. Thank you so much.
So we're gonna take some time for our board members to report out from their tables some of the discussion that took place tonight. Lori, would you like to start just summarizing what you've, I'm gonna bring the mic to you. Just summarize some of the things that you, that came up today?
Sure. So at our table, we have the general education table and we talked about three primary topics. One was the student support time for students in junior high school who are taking high school math classes. The second topic we kind of covered was social emotional health and education for students and suicide awareness.
See English learners. Concern was limited capacity in the dual language for English speakers. We talked about at Boulder Hill, we actually needed more English speakers and there was more demand than what was available. So fixing those types of issues. Recommendations, suggestions, bilingualism is a critical future skill. We need to address the need for more space for DL. Options maybe for in specials for language acquisition. Yeah, follow-up needed, space expansion and then, you know, parameters around specials.
We had one of our talented young students over at OE come over here and remind me about a visit I made a few years back as a board member to Murphy. So that was touching to say the least and informed us, wanted to come over and talk about mental health bill that they were working on in their youth government class, thank you, and also brought up, the bill talks about consolidating non-unified school districts and using that money, savings if you will, to redirect towards mental health funds for school districts. So super, super proud of some of the conversation we had there. Also in the conversation, there were some, we were talking about some of the other bills that were brought up in, in those class, in that class and, or the activity. And we're talking about bills about later school start times at high school and more, conversation brought up more integration of SEL and making it more natural and easier for application and there were some conversations about the superintendent student advisory committee as well.
Thank you.
We tried to get Tyler to talk. He won't do it. So we had many of the same conversations. We also talked about increasing capacity of student voice and how they access learning. We talked about school community, we talked about, we kicked around some ideas with a digital platform. We had lots of conversations, but a lot of them were the same.
Thank you.
At our table, we have our special education leaders here and we were talking about how the frameworks that Mrs. Dahlquist presented on earlier are aligned in our special education with our special education students. We also talked about TAs, specifically our sped TAs and what they are up against with lack of salary and schedule differences. Whilst the schedule works for some of them, while their students are in schools, some of them are looking for a 12-month schedule. And we had some really great discussion around how we can better support them with training and understanding what is expected of them when they walk in the door. And then Dr. Hildebrand also brought up how we can better support our gen ed teachers who are on the front line dealing with all different sorts of students who are presenting in the classroom and different strategies that they're using from support facilitation to co-teaching, et cetera. So it was a great discussion, learning about what's happening with our special ed population.
Thank you Jen. I'd also just like to thank everyone that is in attendance today, from the Board of Education to the administrators, to the community members. We thank you for being here and I hope, we hope that you enjoyed this format and that you spread the word of mouth. So the next time we have a public forum, that hopefully this room is filled with people. So with it, I'm gonna hand the microphone back over to President Simonton for a motion to adjourn.
There is no, there was no, no one for public comment tonight. So can I have a motion to adjourn?